Hi, I'm Sherri Papa. And I'm here with the Orange County Chapter of California Coalition for Health Choice. We put together this presentation for all of you so that you can understand the talking points and the flaws in this bill, so that when you go out into your neighborhoods, your mom's groups, and dad's groups, that you know how to confidently talk about this bill, and why it's not okay, and why those of us who don't vaccinate, or partially vaccinate, or those of us who vaccinate fully, still should be opposing this bill.
So my name's Melissa Floyd. So I do a lot of the data analysis, and the research director for California Coalition for Health Choice. Whether or not you vaccinate or don't vaccinate just really isn't the question. This is about the flawed logic behind this bill, and the flawed logic behind this public health crisis that everybody's talking about. So that's what we'll go into.
Okay, so 277 mandates 10 vaccines, and then it has line item number 11, "For any future vaccines they deem appropriate for public health, safety in the future." Of not fully vaccinating for those 10 diseases is that you will be barred access to either public or private education. 792 mandates for adults, daycare workers, and preschool teachers vaccines as a condition of employment. And we know that these two bills are gateway bills. They're bills, they'll start here, just like 2109, two years ago, started with, "We are required to have a signature to be able to opt out or take the personal belief exemption." This year, we have these bills requiring these mandates for education, and it will continue and continue until we all stand up with our voices loud enough, and educate our friends and family members about the flaws in this bill. Continue to contact our legislators, and to continue to contact the governor to ask him to veto the bill, because now the bill won't be voted on till likely Monday or Thursday of next week.
The ad that after it goes to the Assembly floor next week, it will then go back to the Senate for a Senate floor vote, because they have to vote with the new amendments. So after the Assembly floor vote, that isn't the end of it, just for any of you that weren't aware of that. It does go back to the Senate before it will go to the governor for his option to veto it. And that's another reason why not only do you need to contact your Assembly member, you have to contact your senators as well, to let them know, hey, you're gonna have a floor vote coming up on this. And maybe some of these senators voted yes at the beginning, and maybe they've gotten a lot more information in the last couple of months, because we know, our messaging was just not nearly as solid as it is now. What will everyone listen to? What matters to everyone? And that comes back to data, that comes to logic, facts, using the California Department of Public Health. These are the things that we can use to our advantage, that whether you vaccinate or not vaccinate, it's just not the question here. It has nothing to do with that. This is so much bigger than the vaccination issue. This is about politics taking over, and getting in the way of the public's rights. And this is why we're having these types of things, so people understand what's happening. And you know what they've done, is they've woken up quite a few people, because now we're paying attention.
This is a picture of an ad that was in the Sacramento Bee yesterday, and it talks about the, it talks about three bills, 445, 233, and 982, which allow homeless children to go to school on a religious exemption or without vaccine records. And so this is really just highlighting the hypocrisy that the same senators and Assemblymen that voted yes to pass 277, also voted to pass these bills that allow a small subset of homeless children to go to school without vaccine records. Now, some people said, you know, okay, so this is a small minority group of children, and the legislators are just allowing, or removing any barriers for these children to go to, to go to school. Well, our 200,000 California students that are going to school on a personal belief exemption are also a small minority group of children that are being discriminated against. And so, it's the same thing. There are two minority groups that are being discriminated. So there's, there's a great deal of hypocrisy.
And I think Lisa, one of our colleagues, who was in the Capitol office this week, was bringing this to a lot of the Democratic offices, and it was making them very uncomfortable, as it should be. Because we can see this completely obvious double standard. If there is a public health crisis, and if that is the reason 277 was, was put forth, then why is it not a public health crisis for these other three bills? So for many of you that are in this fight, you know there's already a bill, 2109. That bill was in effect January of last year, proposed two years ago, also by Senator Pan. Essentially, this bill, 277, is an amendment to that. Now he's changing that bill by eliminating that personal belief exemption. So this is the same exact bill, the same number of diseases that are mandated for vaccination, but all it is doing is taking away that right for a personal belief exemption, which you still need a doctor's consult to get in the first place. Between last year and this year, we've seen a 19% reduction in the number of kids that are asking or filing for personal belief exemptions. So when you hear Senator Pan in his hearings talk about this increasing trend, and how personal belief exemptions are just out of control, we look at the data, and we say, really? Because just in the last year alone, we had a 19% decrease in one year. I mean, that is unheard of. So when we're talking about facts, and the need for this bill, and whether or not there's a public health crisis, whether or not this bill can do anything to prevent disease outbreaks in schools, and whether or not this bill is necessary, and there's a compelling state interest, we look at these types of facts. So one, we have that 19% decrease in the exemptions. Just in kindergarten alone, I believe there are 5,000 more kindergartners that are vaccinating this year. So again, why would there be an issue? Why are we in this position that we're even fighting this bill? Okay, so, let's talk about our high vaccination rates. So you hear Senator Pan and others talk about 90%, 92%. That's what the California Department of Public Health might state. But here's where we have some problems. And I'm sure you don't even need to be good at math to understand this part of it. If we have 2.5% of people filing personal belief exemptions, and we take that 2.5% out of 100%, what are we left with? 97.5. What is making that difference between 97.5 and the claimed 90 or 92%? Where is that difference accounted for? I mean, who, you know, who are the kids that we're talking about? Who we're talking about are the conditional entrants. Okay, these are, these are kids who have been fully vaccinated, or maybe are in the process of completing their vaccine series, and they have just not transferred their documentation between schools, or it has not been recorded. But they are fully vaccinated. Okay, so when we talk about 90%, and Senator Pan saying, hey, we need to get that number to 95, guess what? We are at 95. We're higher than 95. We only have 2.5% of people claiming exemptions, and a majority of those people are partially vaccinated. So when it comes down to it, and this is a statistic you guys are gonna wanna memorize, we have .8% of children that are completely unvaccinated. Less than 1%. When we look at those numbers, and we look at the logic, we understand, less than 1% can have no effect on the herd immunity, or community immunity of California as a state. It's just impossible. Meanwhile, we have seven times that amount in conditional entrants whose vaccination records just aren't reported, but that they exist. And how do we know that we're covered? So we look at something like measles, and, and I put quotes around epidemic, because that's how I feel about it. But we had 134 cases this year. And now granted, it originated here in California, and that's the first time that's happened in about two decades. So we're talking about, it started here, no wonder we had more cases, okay? But out of those 134 cases, only 24 of them were between the ages of 5 and 19. Only 24 were even in school age. They were only school age in school. No outbreaks happened in schools, there were no transmissions in schools. So we look at a bill like 277, and we realize, this bill is mandating vaccines for school entry, yet there were no cases of measles in schools. Another thing that we need to look at, at least 25 people were fully vaccinated, and that's with documentation. And here's something you need to know about how California Department of Public Health works. They do not include people who are self-proclaimed vaccinated. So if you were to say, yes, I've been vaccinated, I know for a fact, but you cannot provide your paperwork, you don't count. So we actually only had 42% that were confirmed unvaccinated, which means, we had as many as 58% that were vaccinated. So vaccinated kids are getting measles and spreading measles. Again, this is not an issue of unvaccinated, or if, whether or not you vaccinate. Measles is just one of those things that happens. The majority of cases, almost 60%, were adults. I'm sure many of you in this room know that, but I'll tell you that most legislators that I met with did not know that. Most of these were adults. So how does a, you know, legislation like this, that's mandating it for school-age kids, how does that affect whether or not adults are gonna get it in the future in a, in another outbreak? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. Another thing that's really important to understand, is that measles has a really high contagion ratio. Okay, I talked about this in the testimony for any of you guys that watched the hearing. 12 to 1. That means every one person is gonna, is going to transmit it to potentially 12 to 18 other people. So after we had our first 100 cases, that should've grown to 1,200, and then it would've grown to 14,000, it would've kept growing, especially since it originated here. But that didn't happen. We stopped at 134 cases. How could that happen when we have 38 million people in our state alone? How can we only have 134 cases even though it originated in Anaheim? The reason we only had that is because we have high vaccination coverage. And this year, it proved it for us. If we ever wanted to know if an epidemic would've gotten out of control, it would've happened this year. But it didn't. And that's because we're looking at about 97.5% of our state that's covered. So again, where is the compelling state interest to take away the right to equal education for 200,000 kids? I've actually heard about this one as well. So when, and the reason I'm talking about measles and whooping cough, is these are the only two that Senator Pan has brought up. And the only reason he's bringing this up is because the other seven or eight on the list really just aren't a threat to California. And nobody's addressing that. I don't know why that hasn't come up sometime. I mean, they've given us no reason why we would need to have the rest of those as part of this list without an exemption. It's just, it makes, again, no, it makes no sense. So we're talking about 134 cases of measles, right? We had 11,500 cases of whooping cough in California alone last year. That is almost as high as what was in the 1940s, before vaccines. Again, this is not being talked about. And the reason it's not being talked about is because this vaccine is just not working. So when we look at the numbers, 90% of those kids that got it last year were already vaccinated. Nine out of 10 of them. What does that mean as far as numbers are concerned? That means that only about 750 kids were unvaccinated in the entire state. And 7,000 of them were vaccinated. Who is putting kids at risk in school? When we look at something like whooping cough, which by the way, is deadly, because in the year 2010, we had 10 deaths, infants under four months of age. 10 deaths. One of which had just recently been vaccinated with DTAP. Nine out of 10 were Hispanic babies, because there is an actual predisposition to pertussis for Latin communities. Last year, we had three deaths. Whooping cough is actually killing people, because as we know, measles isn't. Not here in the United States anyway. So again, that's something that has been talked about. 100,000 people are dying from measles every year. It's not happening here. It hasn't happened in our state or in our country for 12 years. And that is confirmed by the CDC. Removing a personal belief exemption is not going to get rid of this problem. Because this problem is affecting vaccinated kids 10 to 1. This is something else legislators don't know. And this is part, and people don't know, which is part of the process of this education. We need people to understand, yes, whooping cough is scary, and nobody wants to see a child die, of course. This outbreak, these outbreaks of pertussis have nothing to do with unvaccinated kids. So why are they being targeted with legislation like this? This is not gonna solve the problem. Many of us here in this room understand how hard medical exemptions are to get. My daughter had seizures after her two-month appointment. She does not qualify for a medical exemption, and so she will be denied access to school, which is why I am in here, fighting this, this situation in this bill. And, and though they've added the amendments, which we'll talk about later, we can, we can discuss exactly what that means for the changes with the medical exemptions, and whether or not there'll be changes. Because the reality is, Mississippi and West Virginia have already passed a bill like this. In Mississippi, they had 45,000 kindergartners, and they wrote 17 medical exemptions out of 50,000 children. So when Senator Pan gets up there and he talks about how, hey, there's nothing in the law that prohibits a doctor from writing them. I don't care if there's nothing in the law. The reality is, in practical application, it's just not happening, and Dr. Bob can talk about maybe why that's the case. And so we are not protected by this idea of having a medical exemption. It's not enough. We need the personal belief exemption, we deserve the right to have that. Communicating about this with your representatives, or your network of people. I'm sure you guys have all heard Senator Pan talk about these pockets of unvaccinated. And he'll say, well, yeah, you know, it's true, California does have really high rates of vaccination, but we have this, these dangerous pockets of low vaccination. Pockets of unvaccinated is basically distorting data. It's taking school data for individual schools, and it's distorting it to make it represent larger populations, larger districts, counties, and making it look like we're at, you know, we need this type of bill because we're at serious risk if we don't do something like this. So for example, if you have a class of 25 kids, and five of those kids are filing for personal belief exemptions, we've got a 20% PBE rate, which seems- Those five kids aren't gonna affect California in any kind of way. In any kind of negative way. And they'll take that 80% and that 20% PBE rate, and they're gonna make it seem like an entire district is at 80% coverage only, and that's why we need this type of bill. Again, they are skewing data. They're taking data and skewing it. There's no weighted proportions here for, for PBE rates, and there is no connection between the PBE rates and the incidence of disease. Now this, this is really important to understand. When we look at the measles cases in California this last year, like I talked about in the testimony, LA has a 1.6% PBE rate, that's really low. And they had 30 cases, 29 cases of measles. And Marin County is 6.5% PBE rate, and they had two cases. So we're looking at a higher PBE rate, saying, well, they should have higher number of cases, right? That's the logic that Senator Pan is trying to scare legislators into supporting this bill with. You know, you have to remember that a lot of people that signed on to support this early on didn't really know what it was. The default vote with something like this is yes. That's a default vote. Because you wanna keep kids safe in school, we don't want diseases, of course. But the reality is, they didn't know the rest of it. And there's so much left to this. There are so many unanswered questions, there are so many unintended negative consequences that come from this, that nobody cared to talk about. Nobody planned and worked this out. Okay, most of you may know that children with AIDS, HIV positive, and hepatitis B, guess what? They're already allowed to be in school. They are completely protected under the US Department of Education. And that is because you cannot discriminate against them based on the notion of perceived contagion. Which isn't that ironic? Because when you look at the potential risk of an unvaccinated child, they have to have a disease before they can spread it. So that is perceived contagion. How can a non-action create an action? It doesn't make any logical sense. And if our federal government is supporting the notion that you cannot discriminate against a child based on perceived contagion, why are our kids any different? So if you opt out of hepatitis B and you get an exemption right now, you're not allowed in school. But the kid who has hepatitis B can be in school. And this is, I mean, I'm being completely straight up, this is exactly what's happening right now. And their privacy is protected, so you don't know who it has to be. Okay, many of you might also know that just since 2000, doses have doubled. The vaccine doses recommended by the CDC schedule have doubled. So our doses are now 49, according to the CDC schedule, by the time you're 5. Now, some legislators might say, well, that's not what this bill mandates, it's only about 35. Regular doctors, when you go, they're following the CDC schedule, they're not gonna follow the California school mandates. So we're getting that 49 doses by 5, and that's just, you know, we've never, this has never been tested before. This cumulative schedule has just not been tested. This is why we're in this position. Trust me. And the one in a million risk, this is the final aspect of the public health argument that we need to talk about, because Senator Pan, and I think it was Assemblyman Wood, the dentist, who was claiming his doctor status, to talk about how he believes in science, and what are the real risks to adverse reactions. And then of course Senator Pan gets up there and says, well, it's one in a million. One in a million doses. So we are saving millions of lives just for that poor one in a million person. But the reality is, that one in a million is addressing only anaphylactic shock. That's one very narrow, specific reaction. And, and that might be very rare. But you know what's not rare? All the other stuff. All the other stuff, like neurological disabilities, brain inflammation, seizures, intestinal damage, severe allergies, loss of previously acquired skills, these are all considered moderate side effects. Seizures are listed under the CDC as moderate. I know, because I looked, because of my daughter. And granted, with the DTAP vaccine, it says 1 in 14,000 will have seizures. That's on the vaccine insert. That's not one in a million. But guess what? That's 1 in 14,000 doses. And when you have an infant, your infant will get three doses in their first year. So now we're talking about 3 in 14,000, which narrows that down to about 1 in 4,500. Now tell me how far off 1 in 4,500 is from 1 in a million? Okay, so, again, I talked about, California's never restricted this before. We've never restricted the right to education. So we've got 200,000 kids that are gonna be forced out of school, and guess what? Who's gonna have to homeschool them? One of you. Which means if you're working, there goes your job. So forced homeschooling is just not an equal alternative. Choosing to homeschool, that's great. But being forced out of your career to have to homeschool your kids because of having the choice for medical freedom is not okay. So who's gonna suffer? Well, dual-income families that require two incomes to survive, yes, they're gonna suffer. Low-income families, single-parent families. How are these people gonna stay home to homeschool their children and pay their bills? I mean, how is that gonna happen? Why are we not talking about that? What's gonna happen to a child's education? What happens if the parent is not equipped? I mean, why is nobody talking about that? Forget the financial side of it. And, and when we're talking about curriculum till 12th grade, we're talking about physics, chemistry, calculus. What parent is equipped to handle every single one of these subjects to their child's potential? What if you only got through 10th grade math? No judgment. I'm just saying, what if that happened? If that happened, you're actually going to be limiting your child's potential. They might be a math genius, and they're not gonna have that opportunity. So to say that, oh, you can stay home and, you know, teach, homeschool, teach them, that's just not giving our kids an equal option. Children with IEPs, this is a big one. Okay, having IEPs, we're talking about specialized classroom-based education. Even with the IEP amendments, this does not address the kids that are required to be in classroom-based programs. A lot of children with autism are required to be in regular school classrooms as part of their child's educational placement. And that is because they need to learn how to adapt to situations and consequences, and everything the way that normal kids do, it's part of their development. The amendments do not address that, and we'll talk about that. And this is totally violating, by the way, idea, which has to do with the Disabilities Education Act, which is a federal law that guarantees students free and appropriate public education. You've probably heard FAP, that word thrown around, that's what it's talking about, free and appropriate public education. And it has to be in the least restrictive environment. And with IEPs, it's, there's a team. It's the parent, it's the educator, and the child. And if something changes, all parties have to agree to that. You cannot force legislation like this, and tell the parent that you have to take your child out of their classroom and put them somewhere else without the parent agreeing to that. That's against the law, that's against federal law. Yet they're trying to get away with it. English learners are another big one that are gonna be affected by this. Did you know that homeschooling law requires homeschool teaching in English? How is that gonna happen? When children are from parents that maybe immigrated here, and their parents do not speak English, let alone fluently? So, and we're talking about 20% of public schools, English learners. 20%. We've got 6.5 million students in California, 20% becomes very significant. So, parents should not have to choose between their beliefs and their children's education. I'm sure everybody here will agree upon that. Whether or not you vaccinate or not, it really just doesn't matter. Everybody can agree that parental rights are important. Is that true? Yes? Everybody here, parental rights are important. Medical freedom is important. If something has side effects, you should have a choice whether or not to, to engage in that or not, right? This is just basic human liberties. So the Supreme Court in 2011 talked about vaccines being unavoidably unsafe. And that's one of those things that happens, because there are inherent risks, that just, it comes with a territory. The pharmaceutical companies are completely free of liability when it comes to adverse reactions. This is the only drug in the world, the only type of pharmaceutical product in the world that has zero liability, and that is vaccines. So right now, there's a federal vaccine court, and they've issued out $3 billion in settlements since it was started. Just last year alone, $220 million. Again, this is not talked about, you don't hear this on the news. What you hear about is the, you know, most recent measles case, but yet they're not talking about stuff like this. And legislators, I have not met one that knew this was the case. Not one of them. They don't know that there is no liability for pharmaceutical companies, and they don't know there's even a federal vaccine court. How is it that they're making laws on things like this without knowing this basic information? So the Institute of Medicine, which ironically was quoted by Senator Pan several times, has said, on their 2013 study on vaccine safety, that studies designed to examine the long-term effects of the cumulative number of vaccines, or other aspects of the immunization schedule, have not been conducted. So in the same study that he's quoting, that they say there's no danger to vaccines, because he quoted that several times, in the same exact study, they also said, oh, but by the way, we haven't actually studied the cumulative effect of these vaccines. And they suggested more studies being done. Isn't that convenient? So the religious idea, I'm sure many of you are aware, this goes against religious beliefs for a lot of people. And right now, religious beliefs fall under the personal belief exemption. So when this personal belief exemption goes away, so will a religious exemption. There will not be a way for you to say, this goes against my moral, I have moral objections to this, and this goes against my personal, long-held-standing beliefs. So we have six different vaccines that have parts of aborted fetal cells in them. Okay, they're all mandated on this. Two specifically, and then strains of them, and four additional. The problem is, they don't make them without it. So it's not like you can just choose the other one. You see, this is like one of the only things where you have a major monopoly. You have one company making the MMR vaccine. That's it. We don't have options here. That doesn't encourage them to improve their safety, and improve their efficacy, et cetera. So religious freedom for a lot of Republican legislators is a big deal, and that's one of the things they stand by.
So Dr. Pam, Dr. Pam Middleton last night said that she would not be comfortable writing a medical exemption unless she has medical records, that she can really justify the medical exemption. You can't come from another practice and say, I had, my child had a vaccine reaction, you know, a couple of years ago, can you write me the medical exemption? That's not gonna happen. So if you guys are thinking that you're gonna go in and self-report some vaccine reaction from you, as a parent, and claim genetic, genetic connection there, Dr. Pam Middleton is a very vaccine-friendly doctor, and that, she said no. And then there's the medical exemption for siblings of those with adverse reactions. Again, it's pretty gray. So if you're, will, if you're able to get a medical exemption for one child, then you'll be able to get it for the other one. Maybe, we don't know. But that was, that was added in today.
Why don't we welcome Dr. Sears, so he can give us a little spiel?
Dr. Bob Sears, pediatrician in Dana Point, and I, you know, support vaccine choice. I give vaccines in my office every day, and I happily accept patients who don't wanna vaccinate, or wanna partially vaccinate. So I, I see all sides of this issue, so I'm just gonna be talking about how this affects me, how I'll be operating as a doctor under this bill if it passes, and what more we can do to defeat it, and what you guys might be able to do as parents to, you know, to, to approach this legislation.
All right, so, a few things I wanted to say, just so it's very clear to everybody. If you have a four-year-old this year, and you enroll your four-year-old in a transitional kindergarten, and you remain in the same school throughout elementary, and you enroll this year in transitional kinder, or kindergarten, you won't be subject to this bill, or at least according to the language of the bill, if you have that four-year-old child right now. I mean, I think it's been popular to hold our kids back a year, and then not go into kindergarten till your kid's like six years old. I, I think if you have the opportunity to enter either train in the same elementary all through sixth grade, you will be, you will be not subject to this bill, at least the way I read it. Is that true?
Until seventh grade.
Until seventh grade.
Until this year, in case something changes next?
Yes, 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 unless they change it. So, so interestingly, when these kids, if you're unvaccinated and you, and you reach seventh grade, there's a couple of, a couple of, you know, little shiny beacons of light in the, in the vast darkness that this is, that is this bill, in that the seventh graders can opt out of hepatitis B vaccine. That's, that's in the bill. I don't know why that's in the bill. They just, there's this part in the bill that says, you know, the hep B vaccine will be mandated, you know, with all the other vaccines, but seventh graders can opt out[1797.73] be mandated, you know, with all the other vaccines, but seventh graders can opt out of hep B. So what, it makes total sense that they wouldn't need hep B, but the kindergartners would. So I'm glad, I mean, I'm glad this is completely, makes a lot of sense. So what would, you know, just if your kids are in that age group, either already in elementary school now or just about to enter this coming year and you're outside of the guidelines of this bill, your kid hits seventh grade, there's no vaccines, you will need three polios, one T-dap, an MMR, a chickenpox. No HIB, you're too old for HIB. You can't get HIB once you turn six years old. And you can only get one T-dap once you turn seven years old. You can't get the whole series of some of these things. So it is six vaccines that the seventh graders will be mandated to get. Did I do that? Let me see, I'm marching a box. Three polios, T-dap, and that's all, right? Well, tennis is a little tricky. It's really hard to find playing tennis. So you really can only get one T-dap once you're seven years or older. So, and you can't get HIB once you're six or older. And you can't get pneumococcal vaccine once you're, once I think you're older than five or something like that. I mean, it's interestingly, it's interesting that these vaccines are only approved in certain doses for certain age groups. So six vaccines, you know, if you can't, it'd be 10 vaccines if you count MMR as three and T-dap as three. But six injections that you would work in when you're, say, your kid's nine, 10, 11, 12, just kind of slowly do them. I'm not saying you should do that, but I'm just saying there's a little bit of semi-good news in that you're not going to be subject to a lot of vaccines. Now, if your first MMR doesn't work, you'll need to get a blood test to prove that your one MMR worked and your one chickenpox worked. If they don't work, you'll need to get a second dose of those. So it could be another MMR, another chickenpox. But, so that's one way that a lot of you guys might be kind of, you know, working through this bill in the years to come if you feel like you do need to stay in school. Some of this also applies if you, let's say you have a kid who's three years old right now and you can't get into school under this bill. And so by the time your kid's in kindergarten in two years, you'll have to follow the bill. Well, if you homeschool for a couple of years, if you wait until your kid turns seven, you're actually kind of subject to those same things except for need hepatitis B. But you can only, once a kid turns seven, you medically can only get one T-dap. You can't get all five. You could get one MMR, one chickenpox, do a blood test, see if they worked. You would need three polios and you'd need the three hep Bs. So that is nine vaccines you didn't want to get, but it's not going to be 35. And that's something I think I might be, you know, working a lot of patients through who feel like they can't get a medical exemption and you do want to attend school. But that's, you know, that's many years down the road. You don't know what's going to happen with this and what the courts are going to do. But that, I mean, that's really honestly, very few people know that. Very few doctors know that. And so I think what Melissa is talking about is going to be more true for the general population. You have a seven, eight, nine-year-old, they're going to throw all the T-daps at you. And they're going to throw, you know, if you're 12 years old, they won't tell you you can opt out of hepatitis B. So a lot of families, unless you have access to a doctor that really knows this, you will be forced, you know, faced with getting the entire large schedule inappropriately and off-label. I know there's going to be doctors that are going to give seven-year-olds five DTAPs without, who have no idea that that's off-label. So I just wanted to throw a couple of those ideas out. And again, if you have a four-year-old and you weren't going to do school yet, you know, I don't need, I mean, you might want to get into a TK this year and you won't be subject to this. I feel like, I feel like, I know that medical exemptions we can talk about. I completely agree that statewide it's going to be just how Sherry and Melissa are describing. Doctors aren't going to want to give medical exemptions. They won't know how, they won't know what qualifies, they'll be afraid of their license. I think that will be a huge challenge statewide. I am personally a little bit encouraged by the language of the amendment. I mean, for them to get rid of that word "contraindication" is huge. Now that they took that word out and they said it's left up to the doctor's discretion, the doctor has the freedom to use their judgment. I think 99% of doctors will use the judgment of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the California Medical Association and mainstream medicine. They'll basically say, they'll be operating under the contraindication guidelines. Meaning that unless your child practically died from a vaccine, you don't warrant a medical exemption. That's what most doctors are going to be doing. I think some of us will operate more under the guidelines of using our medical judgment. If your child had, you know, only a moderate reaction like seizures or encephalitis, you know, I can exercise my judgment that if, on my medical opinion, your child had a really bad reaction and then they shouldn't risk it again, I can exercise that judgment. What I, I'm a little bit worried though, because once I write that letter and I give you that letter and you give that letter to your school, it's really up to that school administrator to decide whether or not to accept that letter. They're not obligated to accept that letter. Now, they're probably obligated to at least accept it as a document and put it in your file, but somewhere along the way, somebody is allowed to report this to the state medical board, all right? So either one of three people has to report this to the state medical board, either myself or you as the parent or the school administrator. One of the three people that see the letter can report it. And if that report's made, then the state will have a third-party doctor review that letter and review your chart and see if that letter is justified. And if it's not justified, I don't really get in trouble. You as a parent don't really get in trouble. They just say... So I think that's where doctors like Pam Middleton are worried, that if they don't have medical documentation that proves your child had that reaction, they might not feel comfortable doing this. So there are a lot of barriers to this, I think a lot of parents are going to feel. If there is, if there does become a growing number of doctors that are willing to listen and look at the medical documentation and write medical exemptions that are medically appropriate and only when they are medically appropriate, and you have a school that is accepting of the medical letter, then I think you might be able to get around this. And I don't know, I wonder if there's any educators here? I'm kind of curious if some of these schools are going to pop up, you know? Schools that do want to accept, you know, unvaccinated families and understand we all have the right to make these free choices, as long as you have a letter that is appropriate from a doctor, the school might not question it and that might be a place where some of these families can congregate. But again, that's only for the well-educated, you know, people that can afford private schools, people that know enough to actually do this kind of thing. The vast majority of the California public isn't going to know this, isn't going to be able to navigate any of this and against their wishes, they might go ahead and then vaccinate when they really otherwise wouldn't have. So I don't know, those are kind of a few of my personal impressions of how I think this might go down and how parents can kind of work with their doctors. I want to just talk about religion really quick, because I think this is a little bit overlooked. The American Medical Association last week may have made it part of their mission to eliminate religious exemptions nationwide. And I think this is a really interesting issue that your legislator might listen to and maybe the governor might listen to. And it's this. If there's a medical organization that has said there's a religious issue that is not, isn't, whatever the word is, it's not a viable issue for us to listen to. There's a medical, a religious issue that is not valid. You know, it just doesn't have a role in our country. And that's the religious exemption to vaccination. And so when we have a medical organization nationwide saying, "We're going to try to eliminate one of our nation's religious freedoms and it's starting in California," that might speak to the legislators and it might speak to the governor that, okay, do we really want to give in with this one religious issue? And if we give into it, then state by state, everyone's going to give into it? Then what's the next religious issue going to be that we give into nationwide? And that might speak to them. I don't know. And I don't know what business a medical organization has trying to eliminate some religious freedoms, but that might be what this, you know, falls, comes down to, I guess, is if you ever have a chance to speak to them, just say, "Hey, you know, Assemblyperson so-and-so, did you know the American Medical Association wants to eliminate one of our religious freedoms nationwide? And it's, you know, the freedom, you know, to choose not to vaccinate. But I'm just worried, do we want to give them that? And if we give them that, what are we going to give them next year? What are we going to give them 10 years from now? What's our whole country going to give up in regards to religious freedom?" If you do find yourself needing to meet these medical mandates for kindergarten, I kind of told you what you would need for an older child who's seven and older or a seventh grader. What you would need to meet for the kindergarten entry, it's really five DTAPs, or four if you get one of them a little late. Three or four polios, depending on what age you are. So if we kind of go at the minimum, it would be four DTAPs, three polios, three hep Bs, one HIB, one pneumococcal, is pneumococcal on there? No, not pneumococcal. One MMR, one chickenpox, you have to prove they work. I lost count, I lost fingers, but 13, at least 13 vaccines and with a blood test to prove, yeah, 13 injections and with a blood test that proves your MMR and your chickenpox worked. And if they didn't work, you have to get another dose. So 13 injections is what's mandated by this for kindergarten entry. Again, you guys know that now, but most people aren't going to know that. And as Melissa pointed out, most people would be getting, you know, 35 or something injections instead, because that's what the full schedule is. But again, the mandated schedule is calling for less than the full schedule. And some of you might, after reading, might decide that that's the appropriate medical decision for you and your family and you would go about that. The other thing is, none of this means you have to start any of this as a baby. You know, if you want to delay vaccines, you will have the freedom to delay them until you start into school. And, you know, Dr. Pan made such a show of saying that you won't have to be fully vaccinated by the time you enter school. And we all heard him say, even though the law, the bill says you will have to be fully vaccinated, Dr. Pan claims there's this other law called a conditional entrance, that it's not part of this bill, but it basically says if you haven't met the requirements, you can get a letter from your doctor that says, "Here's our plan. We plan to meet the requirements." And as long as the school has that, who knows? They might follow that away and forget all about you, right? We can only, we can only hope. But, so you might not have to meet all that right at the time of entry. You might just have to agree that you're going to meet that and start working toward and start vaccinating slowly one by one. And then who knows how long, how many years that process can be drawn out for? We don't know yet, because it's really been kind of untested. But again, these kinds of options are really only for the well-educated who go out there and hear about this and learn about it. Again, I think the vast majority of people will, it'll be, you know, as dire as we all are afraid it will be.
There's a few different legal options. The first legal option is to file an injunction, which would stay the bill. It wouldn't go into effect in January of 2016. And while it works through that process in the courts, a couple of months or however long it takes to work through that process, then the law won't go into effect. So maybe that buys some time. It buys another year of children getting into kindergarten unless it dies in that injunction process. I mean, the bottom line is whether this bill passes or doesn't pass, our fight doesn't end here.
Right.
I mean, and that's my whole point. We need to grow. Our next town hall needs to be bigger and the next one after that needs to be bigger. Because whether it passes and we go to these next steps Sherry's talking about, we need to grow our numbers and really put our feet down and say, "This is not happening in our state." If it doesn't pass, it'll be back next year and we'll be in the same position. Regardless, our movement, and this movement is not an anti-vaccination movement, this is a pro-choice movement, pro-parental rights movement, pro-freedom, medical freedom. This is the movement that needs to grow. And regardless of what happens with this bill, we're all going to keep going. And that's the point. This is why we're having this. This bill, the vote might happen in a week or two, but it's not over. It's just beginning. That's the bottom line. But, no, but the reality is, this is uniting everybody, right? It doesn't matter what your religion is. It doesn't matter if you do vaccinate. It doesn't matter what political party you align yourself with. We are all connecting under that premise that we have basic human rights and bills like this are violating our basic human rights. And that's why this is everybody's problem.